Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any additions or corrections?
No, the agenda is appropriate as is.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam President.
Gary.
Me.
Gary.
Okay. Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Emma Doherty, second.
Second by Emma. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, 7-0. The next on our agenda is the budget hearing. Lisa, do you need to present on that?
I have a motion.
Okay, we will now...
Just go ahead and read, that will open.
We'll now open the budget hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering questions or answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed use of funds and the amount of tax to be levied. Yes, Nedra.
I recommend that we approve the 2019-2020 budget as published.
So you're moving that we approve the budget? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Jim. Second by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We don't believe we have any recognitions or presentations tonight, correct?
Correct.
All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just a minute, please. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the July 9, 2019 regular meeting, the minutes of the July 31, 2019 special meeting, minutes of the July 31, 2019 special meeting, minutes of the August 1, 2019 special meeting, the personnel report, financial reports, which include the July bills list and the July bond bills list, the bond budget summary, the treasures report for June, the investment report for June, approval of encumbrance listings, which include to hand to mind for supplemental math materials for grades K through 5 in the amount of $64,579.86, and to ISI industrial services for the remediation of asbestos at 1511 gypsum in the amount of $23,160, and to approve the 2019-2020 school resource officer agreement for 3.5 officers with the compensation rate to remain at the same level as the 2018-2019 school year, which was $285.42 per full day and $142.71 per half day. Do I hear a motion to...
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the encumbrance listings as presented.
The...
Madam President?
Yes. It should be consented.
Is it just that or the whole consent?
The whole consent. I'm sorry. I was reading from the wrong spot.
Nedra, you have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, 7-0. Next is the public forum. If there's anyone here who would like to present, you may come forward at this time. Okay. Excuse me. We go on to the action agenda, which starts with the bond refinancing. So Greg Barnberg is here to present. Go ahead, Mr. Barnberg.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, Greg Barnberg with Raymond James. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this afternoon and wanted to share with you a bond refinancing opportunity, which I know the district has a history of taking advantage of low interest rates and capturing the savings for the taxpayers. And it's interesting that when you look back over the period of time that I've had the opportunity to work with the district, you've been able to capture savings nine different times when interest rates were low. And when we do a refinancing, we can go in and refinance just a select portion of the outstanding bonds, just the portion that's advantageous to refinance. And so your total cumulative savings is $5,255,000, and those are tax dollars that stay in the community rather than being paid out to bond investors. And those nine different opportunities, the savings ranged from the lowest refinancing had $216,000, the highest savings had a little over $1 million. It was $1,1163, and again, that totals to $5,255,000. And I thought it would be good to share with you that recap as you think about this opportunity, because any savings would add to that 5.2 million. But it's also interesting to think about those savings that you've captured in relation to the bond elections. And I think back to the '98 bond election and 2014 bond election, and you're making representation to the voters about what the mill levy will be. And I think pretty much every year from those elections, you've been able to set the mill levy lower than what was anticipated. Part of that is due to taking advantage of low interest rates and reducing your debt service expense. So it's a little bit surprising that this opportunity presented itself during 2019, because coming into this year, a lot of the economists were saying that we would see gradual increase in rates, and it's been anything but that. It's been a fairly steady decline in rates throughout the year. With the exception of just the last few weeks, it's been a pretty dramatic decline in rates. And to put that in perspective, the 10-year treasury note, which is what we often use as a benchmark for interest rates in the bond industry, in November of 2018, it was 3.3%. And, you know, again, those economists were saying that, you know, by the end of 2019, many of them were predicting 3.4, 3.5 would be the ending interest rate. So fairly stable, but gradual increases were predicted. But two weeks ago, it hit 2.05%, very dramatic drop, and then it's continued since then to 1.65%, which oddly enough, you think about it, the rate today is half of what it was just, you know, eight or nine months ago. So that has led to a lot of issuers looking at outstanding bonds to see if there's an opportunity to take advantage of those lower interest rates. That led us to meet with your administration, to share an opportunity related to the 2014 bonds, and the analysis that we had shared with you, I believe... Sorry. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. The analysis that was shared with the board shows a savings of $2,711,000, and I believe that was included in your board packet. And what we're looking at is a portion of those 2014 bonds, primarily in the years 2028 through 2034. But I would say that as interest rates move, the bonds that make sense to refinance may change, and so the size of the issue may change, but also that final savings may change. In other words, we only want to refinance the portion of the bonds that is the most efficient, the most advantageous, and if bonds have marginal savings or no savings, then we'll leave that portion of the bond issue outstanding, and there's no benefit to the district, there's no reason to refinance it. But the interest rates on the outstanding bonds that we're looking at refinancing have an average rate of 4.28%, and in the current bond market, we're estimating that the new interest rate would be 2.88%. So it'd be a reduction of 140 basis points or 1.4%. And it's obviously that lowering of the interest rate, which is what drives the savings. Anytime we do a refunding bond issue, we're actually going out and selling a new series of bonds to investors at low interest rates, taking the proceeds of the new bond issue and using that to pay off your old bonds. And it's important to note that all of the costs associated with selling the new bond issue are paid out of the proceeds of the new bond issue, and so when we compare the payments on the new bond issue to the bonds that we're refinancing, that savings is net of all costs, and that 2.7 million estimate is the actual amount that the district would save over the life of the issue. And so when you look at our savings report in the board packet that was sent out, the prior debt service column does not show all of the outstanding bonds, it's just showing the payments on that portion of bonds that we feel makes sense to consider refinancing, and then we're comparing what you would have paid on that portion to what your new payments would be on the new issue at that estimated rate of 2.88%. And that's how we calculate that savings. And that prior debt service column, again, relates to just the portion of the bonds that we would be refinancing. The process that we go through, as some of you may recall, from the board's perspective, I like to think of it as really a two-step process. The first step is deciding if you want to move forward with the refinancing, and if so, then you would give us permission to work with your bond attorney in the form of adopting the authorizing resolution. And the authorizing resolution doesn't obligate you to accept the results of the refinancing. If interest rates go up and we miss this opportunity, and we just never move forward with the refinancing, then there's no cost to the district, or there's no obligation for you to accept a lower savings or no savings. But assuming rates remain favorable and we're able to bring back a level of savings that is acceptable to the district, then the second step, from your perspective, would be adopting the bond resolution. The first step is the authorizing resolution, the second step, the bond resolution, and in the bond resolution, we'll have the final interest rates and the new amounts of the refunding bond issue, and at that point, the savings would be locked in. So the typical process that we go through, once we have the authorization from the board to proceed, we'll have the bond rating assigned, the preliminary official statement or prospectus will be given to investors, and then that usually takes two to three weeks. And so at that point in time, we would be in a position that if rates are favorable, we could lock in the savings and then come back to you at your next board meeting, whenever that date would be for that bond resolution. So wanted to make you aware of this opportunity. If we were able to lock in a savings of 2.7, thinking back to, you know, all of those times we were so proud of building up to 5.2, this would be a giant step towards a larger number if we were able to lock in that level of savings. So wanted to make you aware of this opportunity and see if it's something that the board wanted to move forward with and take advantage of. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Madam President, I have a motion.
Yes, Jim.
I move that we approve an authorizing resolution for the Series 2014 General Obligation Refunding Bonds as presented.
Is there a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Emma? Thank you. Any other discussion about this? We've had a lot of good information in the packet. So all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, 7-0.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next time.
Thank you.
Next, we have... Just a minute, excuse me. I will get the hang of this any minute now. Okay, so now we have a lot of salary and work conditions information from Erin and apparently Shannon.
I'm just...
Oh.
She's sitting next to her. Thank goodness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you all know, this summer, we engaged in negotiations with our certified employees regarding their terms and conditions of employment, as we do every year. We, after reaching impasse, did go to mediation and settled at that time on an agreement, which I'm here to present those changes to you today. I'm bringing them to you for your consideration and for your action. However, any action, if you decide to take action today, will be contingent upon ratification by the NEA members. The vote opened, I believe, yesterday, last night. Usually runs for about a week. I don't have a firm end date yet, but we should have that answer pretty quickly. So the changes this year that are being recommended for the 2019-2020 school year are education movement on the salary schedule, single-step movement on the salary schedule for years of service, an increase of $815 to the base salary, which would make that now $39,000, increasing the monthly employer-paid health insurance contribution for the eligible employees of $15, up from 500, so up to 515 per employee. Then there were some changes to the negotiated agreement language itself. The first page that you see here, and you should have this in your packet, was to Article 1B regarding the duty day and planning time. We removed, as you'll see there, two sections related that were in the negotiated agreement that have either expired or involve programs that are no longer in place. And we increased planned time minutes of 10 minutes a week for both high school teachers and elementary classroom teachers, up to 245 minutes. We also made some changes to Article 1, Section C, amending the small group staff development days to allow their use without having to submit a building-wide proposal that would have to be voted down before the small groups could engage in that small group staff development. The changes we made to that section include additional language for that purpose, but also we rearranged the order of the section itself to make it more... to have it flow more with what we do in actual life. Any questions on that one? We also amended Article 2 regarding leave. There were some changes that just hadn't been made from the year before. For example, that discretionary was changed to PTO leave last year, but didn't get changed in the agreement itself. We added some language that says teachers may apply for PTO leave during the last 20 days of employment, but they have to state a reason for that leave, and then the executive director of human resources will consult with the building administrator and then determine whether that leave should be granted. We also removed two days that were previously considered blackout days for people subject to the negotiated agreement. There are two in the calendar, two teacher work days traditionally, one at the end of each semester, that do not involve student contact days, nor do they involve staff development. And we agreed to remove those as days that PTO could be used. So those days will be eligible for PTO leave, assuming the employment requirements have been met before that day. Any questions on that one? Okay, then we added, I guess it's at the bottom of this previous page, a section on administrative leave. Administrative leave is something that the district has used a few times in the past to, if there's a need arises where there's a safety concern, or an investigation, or a claim of some situation that warrants further investigation, administrative leave is what we use to place the employee on leave, sort of get everyone settled so that we can do the investigation without... so we can just protect everyone involved, both the employee, students, community members, whoever is part of the situation. It just helps us keep everything stable while we check into what's happening, and the association requested that we put that actually into the negotiated agreement and explain what we do in that situation. So that's what this language is.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Number two on that.
Yep.
Do we assume that the employee is notified in a meeting?
Not always. The employee is not always notified that they're being placed on administrative leave in a formal meeting. We do that because if we... sometimes if we had to wait around for people to attend a formal meeting, we might not be able to achieve that stability that we're looking for in the moment. We do frequently ask preliminary questions at that time to even determine whether this is something that's even possible, based on timing, that type of thing. But at that point, we might ask a question regarding that and then place them on administrative leave because we decide that more information is warranted.
I think my question then relates to when does an employee know that he or she should, if he or she wishes, request a representative of his or her choosing?
At the time, someone from human resources or one of the building administrators says to the person, "We're going to place you on administrative leave." That's at the point at which they are allowed to obtain a representative for that purpose.
Okay. So there is a person-to-person contact first?
Yes. There's always person-to-person contact, I'm sorry. I was thinking of a formal meeting where we have representatives involved and multiple parties.
Right, but I was thinking of the initial, you know, do you receive... is it possible that they would receive something by email?
No, never.
Yeah, it's always person-to-person.
It's always person-to-person.
Okay.
Any other questions about that one? The next change regards special salary provisions in Article 3. This change was to... was made to just clarify and comport with our current practice. We added SLPs to the group of people, I believe, last year or the year before, who would receive automatic placement at Masters plus 60, I mean, at Masters plus 30. We felt we needed to clarify that it's not... it's a school psychologist who has achieved the EDS degree and SLPs on the Masters plus 30 column. The school psychologists, the nature of the programs differ from program to program. When they have obtained the Masters versus the EDS degree can be different depending on which program you attend. It is the EDS degree that allows this group to work for us as school psychologists, so we simply wanted to clarify that language in the agreement.
What is an EDS? What does that stand for?
Educational science degree, is that correct?
Specialist.
Specialist, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the last language change we have for you is simply the removal of an expired section under the retirement plan, which was the phase-out plan that had been in place, I think, since 2001 or 2002. It expired, so this last year, so we are now removing it, recommending removal from the agreement. Any questions on that? Okay, so with that, it's our recommendation that you approve these changes for the 2019-20, 2019-20 salary and work conditions for certified staff.
Do I hear a motion about that?
Madam President, I move that we accept all changes to the agreement with NEA.
Emma Doherty, second.
Thank you, and Emma, seconded.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Can we... can we... I would suggest that we maybe amend that just a little bit, because it needs to be pending NEA salina ratification.
Pending NEA's acceptance, yes.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
And Emma, you second that, James?
I second that, too.
Yes. Any discussion on that?
Madam President, my wife, as we all know, is a teacher, so I will be leaving the room as we... before we vote on this, so I want to just let you know.
Thank you.
Come back.
All right, we have the motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, 6-0. Go ahead, Erin.
Okay, now we move to the recommendations for 2019-2020 salaries and benefits for the classified and professional technical staff members. As most of you are familiar with, we utilize the negotiations process with our certified staff as the springboard to increasing and changes in work conditions for the rest of our staff members. For the certified employees and the professional technical employees, we're recommending that you add 2.13% to the base salary schedules, allowing for single-step movement on that salary schedule, and increasing the monthly employer-paid health contribution to $515 per employee. What that means for you all is that we would add 2.13% to the base pay on the classified schedule, which would increase the base cell from $9.38 to $9.58. For professional technical schedule, it would mean increasing the base salary from $35,92.72 to $36,667.45. For the Head Start teachers, it would increase the base, as it does with the certified teachers under the negotiated agreement, from $38,185 to $39,000. And then additional groups who are not included on a specific salary schedule, a 2.13% increase would be reflected in these new hourly wages. Any questions on that?
I'd just like to ask the superintendent, do we intend to discuss some of these schedules at a later time?
Yes, per your direction during the board retreat, our special board meeting, we are going to prepare some information for you for further discussion on those salary schedules?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. We did talk about what is a living wage in Salina, and we would like to be at that level.
Wonderful.
Okay, go ahead. Is that all there is?
So with that, we're making these recommendations that you approve these increases for the classified and professional technical staff as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion on that one? Gary?
Madam President, I move that we approve wage increases for classified and professional technical staff as presented, allow for single-step movement on salary schedules, and increase board contributions to health insurance to $515 per month.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Emma seconds, and I know Jim...
Madam President?
Yes, you.
I'm going to remove myself for this vote, as my spouse is an employee.
Thank you.
He's come back, too.
All right, we have a motion on classified and professional technical staff. All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, six-zero. Thank you. Jim, come back. All right, Ms. Wright, continue on.
We move on to the 2019, 2020 salaries and benefits for administrators. Again, we are recommending that you add 2.13% to the base salary, allowing for single-step movement for longevity purposes, and increasing the monthly employer-paid health insurance to $515 per employee.
Thank you, do I hear a motion on this one? Does anyone need to recuse themselves?
Madam President.
Let me just go with Emma here.
Madam President, I make most of, we approve the 2019, 2020 salaries and benefits for the administrators as presented.
Do we need to read all the rest of that in that motion? All right, do I have a second?
A second?
Nedra, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, seven-zero. Next is for the staff handbook changes, Ms. Wright?
Now we move to the support staff handbook changes. You were presented with this at the last meeting on July 9th. Our intent at that time was to make a recommendation to change a small portion of the language regarding payout of vacation leave when an employee leaves our employment. We're recommending that you make that, allow that change, crossing out employees who retire or resign, and changing the language to employees who leave employment will be paid their daily rate of pay for unused vacation.
Thank you, do I hear a motion to approve the support staff handbook? Gabe?
Move we approve the 2019, 2020 support staff handbook as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Emma seconds. Any discussion? You need to leave on that one, too, Jim. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, six-zero. All right, now for the certified teachers handbook.
The changes to the certified teachers handbook for retired educators is what we're looking at at this point, and they mirror, to the extent that the provisions within the retired educators handbook are the same provisions that are included in the negotiated agreement, the changes we're recommending are the same changes being recommended for, that well you've just approved pending ratification for the negotiated agreement. I do want to draw your attention to one different change, there's one thing that's different with the retired educators, which is under Article Two regarding leave. In the top paragraph, we inadvertently left in 20 last year, so we'd like to cross that out. It is, when we changed to PTO leave, the maximum was cut to 100 days rather than 120, and the word 20 didn't get eliminated last year, so we'd like to do that now. But the change that I'm referring to is that teachers with 15 or more years of continuous service in the district shall receive compensation for days of unused leave at the rate of $25 per day. Previously, it had been $10 per day. That hadn't been changed in a while, we felt it was time to do that. So that is the one change, different and apart from that, which were made to the negotiated agreement.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move we approve the 2019, 2020 handbook for certified teachers, retired educators as presented.
We have a motion, do I have a second? Jim, seconds. Is there any discussion? I have a question, is it's just, this applies to retired educators who came back and taught some more?
Correct.
This is what we're talking about?
These are people who have retired, as defined by CAPERS, have retired and are receiving contributions from the CAPERS retirement system, but they have chosen to go back to work and are filling really important roles that we need here for us despite their retirement.
Thank you. Do we have a discussion? Then, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the board representative appointments. Ms. Exline, would you like to talk about that?
Yes. Each year at this time, we have to update who will be representing you on each one of the boards in the community, and so there is a list of proposed appointments in your agenda for your consideration, and if you approve of those, we would just need a motion to formalize that, please.
Then, do I hear a motion about the board representatives?
Madam President?
Nedra.
I move that we approve the 2019, 2020 board representative appointments as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Emma. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, seven-zero. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the discussion agenda, and there is nothing on the discussion agenda. So the next item is school board reports and upcoming dates of importance, and the dates we have here are Tuesday, September 10th, the Salina Education Foundation Fall Breakfast at Salina Country Club at 7:00 a.m., Saturday, September 14th is the Teacher of the Year luncheon at the Hilton Garden Inn at noon, and Tuesday, October 1st, KASB Fall Regional Meeting in McPherson at 5:30 p.m. Let's start with Gary for board reports.
No reports to make today.
Okay, Jim?
Madam President, I attended the KASB Regional Roundtable with several other members in McPherson, and then the first-day kickoff for new, for the teachers coming back. That was a lot of fun, having everybody there and enjoying that.
Thank you. Nedra?
I was happy to be today at the audit interview for our school district. That went very well, and I, too, was at District Assembly. That was fun, throwing out T-shirts, had a great time. Also attended the final negotiations meeting. I was at the board retreat, budget work session, and I was really happy to be able to attend the post-construction conference that Chris Upson led at Central in the morning and South in the afternoon, and got to be around the architects once again and the contractors once again, and that was a great discussion, and had several groups of people, including the district members, present, and we took tours of the building and even went so far as to project into the future what that may look like for our district. And I might add that Chris did an excellent job with that, and it was great to see him again and tell him thank you for the beautiful job they did.
Thank you. Gabe?
Nothing to report.
Emma?
Went to the regional meeting in McPherson as well, and to the board retreat and to the district-wide staff meeting at Central High.
Carol?
Attended all the meetings that the others attended, but, Gabe, we attended a CKCIE meeting.
Oh.
A month ago.
A month ago, yes.
That's why. Anyway, a couple of things from CKCIE. Mike Lowers announced a new website after August 1st, www.305ckcie.com. I'm not sure how that differs from the other one, it may have just been reversed. Number of gifted students served by CKCIE has been decreasing over the past six years, in part because many school districts are doing a much better job of meeting student needs in the classroom. Gifted teachers are serving more as counselors than providers of programs. Job Fair was held on 7/13, was highly successful, 21 pairs hired at that time, although two resigned two days later. Noted, please, considerable turnover in those positions, it's just really difficult, in part because the wage is low. We have been talking about the difficulty in hiring new special education teachers, very few individuals are coming out of college gaining such degrees. We all know that there's a shortage of teachers all the way around. We lost four speech-language pathologists, hired three, and Mike had an interview on the 22nd, don't know how that came out.
No show.
Ooh, ouch, so, missing that one. No show, he said, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Well, since the last board meeting, I sort of felt like it was all school board all the time. I attended my first Equity Council meeting, and we heard a presentation from the Salina Community Relations Division. I attended the Smoky Hill Education Service Center Board Meeting, and the, a board member from Chapman, USD 473, was elected as the new president to that board, that's Brian Rock from Chapman. On July 3rd, Ms. Exline and Gabe and I all attended a KASB Leadership Training in Hayes. Also, on that day, I attended, I was interviewed by Salina Media Connection, who is interviewing all of the school board candidates, and, well, they have already, and they're all posted on the Salina Media Connection website, which is salinatv.org. The next three days after that, I attended a conference in Wichita that was a part of, well, I got to go because of the Salina Arts and Humanities, which invited me to attend. It was about incorporating the arts into social emotional learning in schools, and at least partly because of that, I incorporated both visuals and music into my presentation at the All Staff Assembly. On July 31st, I attended the Salina NEA meet and greet, and then I attended the budget meeting with Lisa Peters and all the board meeting, board members. On August 1st was the school board retreat, and we had a really great discussion, a bunch of discussions there, it was a really good meeting. I also attended the negotiation meetings and the mediation session and was happy to reach agreement on that. On August 1st, I got to speak to all the new teachers, the brand-new teachers in the district at their orientation at Central, and on August 7th, I got to introduce the board members and speak to the staff at the All Staff Assembly, also at Central in the auditorium. On August 9th, we attended the regional KASB meeting in McPherson, and I've been having coffee with some of the board candidates to talk to them about what they're getting into if they get elected. And finally, this morning, I was oriented into the Chamber of Commerce Board with Eric Brown. That's enough. Right now, we have a superintendent's report, Ms. Exline.
Okay, well, it has, it has indeed been a busy month, and I want to start by saying thank you for the amount of time that the seven of you spend supporting our schools. It is amazing to me that what you do for us, and so much of it goes unnoticed. So with that, we've been to many things together. I was able to go to the NEA Salina New Teacher Event, that was a fabulous opportunity where NEA Salina hosted an event for our brand-new teachers at Old Chicago, and so that was a really positive evening and fun. I have had several opportunities to address staff here in the last month. I did get to also speak at the New Teacher Orientation, and at the All Staff Meeting, I had a chance to visit with all faculty and staff there.
I will say, Ms. Exline, that I've had lots of feedback, that the fact that you ended that early is quite impressive to the whole district.
Well, I may have to plan more comments, I don't know. I also had a chance to talk to the Heartland staff several days later because they weren't all in attendance at that back-to-school meeting, and so that was fun to be able to greet them. Had my first presentation on Friendly Fire, my first experience there, and very positive conversation on Friendly Fire, and so I appreciate the interest in schools and being able to participate in that. And then, the last couple days has been very exciting for me because I was able to attend multiple staff development sessions in buildings, lost myself a little bit in several of them and spent more time than perhaps I had intended. I also made it to several back-to-school nights last night where it was Meet the Teacher with Parents, and so that was fun. And then today, I made it to 10 of the buildings. I will plan to make it to other buildings tomorrow to make sure that I've been able to see students in action, and, boy, our staff spent hours and hours and hours getting ready for students, and we had such a positive kickoff to the year, so kudos to our faculty and staff there.
Thank you. Now we have several executive sessions that we need. The first one is attorney-client, and I think we should start with about 30 minutes on that. Do I hear a motion?
Let's move the Board of Education going to executive session at 5:50 for 30 minutes for the purpose of consultation with board legal counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which if discussed in open session would waive that privilege, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:20 in the Board Conference Room.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Emma seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried, seven-zero. We'll be back in session in the other room after that, 6:20. Thank you. Best time, fill in our place. Carol, I hope you weren't. I pulled you off.
One and a half. For those gentlemen, you know. That's Jake Peters. One of us. Tall guy, I don't know the other guy. All right? He's a lawyer. Mine for my file.